To order at seven oh three P M. Madam Board Clerk, can you do roll call, please?
Yes.
Okay, trustee Whitrow.
Can you do?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Here.
Trustee Handy.
Here.
Trustee Delphine Polk.
Here.
Trustee Bonia.
Here.
Trustee Gonzalez U N.
I am here. Thank you.
President Reese. Okay, Madam President, you have a quorum.
Thank you for that. Now let's move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. President Nathaniel Jones III, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Let's wait.
Flag. Oh, I'm sorry.
My apology. I should have said that to you beforehand.
Sorry. Okay. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
The United States of America.
Of America.
And to the republic.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation.
One nation.
Under God, indivisible.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Yeah, for that. And now let us move on to two point four, which is the swearing in ceremony of our wonderful, wonderful student trustee.
Thank you, President Reese. It's my great honor. I, Iru Nii, do so many swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true face and elegance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter. Thank you.
Trustee, congratulations. Welcome, welcome. You're on the dais.
Thank you.
The virtual dais. And let us move on now to the Report of Action Taken in closed session. Vice President Gonzalez U N. Do we have a report? You need to.
You're you. I'm sorry, there were, there were no reportable actions out of closed session tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Two point six, the approval of the agenda. I need a motion, but I do have. Okay, second for that motion?
Second.
First by trustee withrow, second by Bonia. I do need to make one change. For two point fourteen, the presenter needs to be changed to the board chair as opposed to Vice Chancellor McKinley.
Well, let's set that as an amendment. Trustee Whitrow.
I'll accept that.
Thank you. Roll call. And I'm Board Clerk.
Trustee Whitrow.
Aye.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee Handy.
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk.
Yes.
Trustee Bonia.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez U N.
Yes.
And trustee Reese.
Yes, thank you.
Very motion pass.
Great. Thank you for that. Let's do the approval of the minutes. I need a motion.
So move.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay. First motion by trustee Whitrow and second by Gonzalez U N. Roll call.
Trustee Whitrow.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee Handy.
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk.
Yes.
Trustee Bonia.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez U N.
Yes.
Trustee Reese.
Yes, thank you.
Motion passive.
Great. And then let us move on to two point eight. And for two point eight, Maisha, could you share the board vision statement first? And then we'll go on to the signed statements. And as Maisha is doing that, let me just give you a bit of a summary. These are the, the cooperation statement that was signed from the retreat. The documents, the three documents, the trifecta of documents that we are looking at, the board vision statement, the board policy on communication protocols and processes, which will come later, and the signed letter is the culmination of the incredible work by President Bonia. I wanted to make sure that everybody knew that, and Dr. Helen Benjamin over the past six months, and the work of the very hard work of every single board member on this at, at P C C D. I want to take a moment, though, to go ahead and read the vision statements and the cooperation statement in full because it is quite important, the content on there. I don't see, though, the vision statements. Do you have that with you?
It was not uploaded to board docs, so I will have to, let me locate that one.
Sorry.
It was not in our package.
Yeah.
Then you know what? Let me just give you, why don't we put the cooperation statement up?
Okay, I can do that.
Okay. And then while you're putting the cooperation statement up, I'm just going to read the board vision statement as well. If that's okay, I'll do this first. Over the course of the last six months, we, the Peralta Community College Board of Trustees, have been engaging in a process of reflection to improve our effectiveness as a board. As a result, we have conducted a critical review of our work over the last several years through a formal self-evaluation and established meaningful goals. The list of commitments below represents the results of our deliberations and our dedication to function as a high-performing team on behalf of the people we represent in helping students reach their educational goals. Number one, the board is continuing to work on trust in and among our members. Number two, we agree to listen and seek to understand others and opposing viewpoints with the expectation of good intentions and a deep commitment to the district students. Number three, we commit to being prepared for each meeting and to work within our established communication protocols when we seek additional information. Members will review the agenda in advance of each meeting and adhere to board policy two, three, four, zero for adding items to the agenda. Number four, we have reviewed the board's code of ethics and commit to reviewing it annually at our organizational meeting to remind ourselves of the behavior we are to exhibit and the guidelines we are to follow in our role. Number five, if the code of ethics is violated, we commit to follow the process stated in the code and will first address concerns informally to settle disagreements one-on-one between and among members before moving to the formal process. Number six, we agree that from time to time, the chair will remind members of appropriate behavior and may call for a recess or redirect members if they stray from the topic of discussion. Number seven, we collectively recognize that it is within the duties, thank you for doing that. Not too far up. We collectively recognize that it is within the duties and authority of the chair to render decisions or take actions to keep our meetings on track and adherence to board policy. Number eight, we will strive to fulfill the vision we established for ourselves. And number nine, we will model the behavior we want others to exhibit. We therefore commit to honoring and upholding these commitments in words and in action. And all of what you see here are each of the board members' signatures. And I am wondering if I should quickly just read the board vision statements that we had also developed in the retreats. Shall I do that? Okay. The Peralta Board of Trustees is dedicated to achieving, this is the vision statement, educational excellence by supporting each student's academic goals, professional aspirations, and individual dreams in an environment where all are respected, honored, and where they dare to dream. The Board of Trustees faithfully represents the common values and vision of their respective communities while adhering to formal procedures, practices, and policies with civility and cooperation. To fulfill this vision, we will respect each other. Bullet point two, practice active listening and be willing to reflect and listen before responding. Next bullet point, focus on academic excellence and issues on which we have an impact. Understand the role of trust and consequences of not maintaining trust with each other. Protect the district. Acknowledge and honor differences of opinion. Direct the C E O as a board, not as individuals, and have a common understanding of the role of the trustees. And I just wanted to quickly say that it is not lost on me that these signatures are on this particular commitment. It was no small feat. It was no insignificant feat. It was incredibly monumental. And the fact that we have signed this, that we spent this time doing this, is an incredible pivotal event. And I just want to give you all my commitment as board chair, because I do not take this responsibility lightly, that I also hold this commitment to you. And taking the advice of Dr. Benjamin at every board meeting, what I will do is I will start off our meeting with the tenets of our vision statement or our kind of communication protocols as the framework for our board meeting to ensure that we can remind ourselves every time we have a board meeting, what we have committed to doing with one another as we engage in conversation and discussion. And that is it. Thank you all. Okay. Let us move on to the next board item. Two point nine, do we have any associated student reports?
We do. We have Liam Zoo, and I will let him in now.
Wonderful.
Okay, he's in.
All right, thank you. Good evening, President Bonia, members of the board, Dr. Wong. I root for her official confirmation as our representative student trustee. Since our last correspondence, in December, the A S B C C put forth a resolution for the B C C Academic Senate's consideration, that it be known as the Remote Proctoring Resolution, which aims to discourage the use of Honor Lock and other third-party remote proctoring softwares within Peralta. Together with the B C C faculty leadership, we identify one area for more precise language and will submit a second draft for endorsement when the semester begins. After hearing support and concerns from faculty, we also agreed to introduce a student-led committee aimed at upholding academic integrity while also proposing policies on future proctoring softwares. We're also in communications with other associate student bodies within Peralta with aims to improve coordination across campuses in the upcoming semester. Now with the, the campus life office, in the upcoming weeks, we'll plan community events such as student circles, club rush, welcome week, and most notably, a leadership conference next week alongside the other Peralta associate council, student councils. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Liam, for that. Two point ten, Classified Senate Report. Terrence, are you in the room? Terrence Fisher?
I don't see Terrence as one of the attendees.
All right, let's move on to two point eleven, the District Academic Senate. Alenny?
Hi, Happy New Year, everyone. Good evening, President Reese and members of the Board of Trustees, and welcome trustee Delphine Polk and trustee Jenkins. The District Academic Senate looks forward to working with you in the best interest of our students first and always. My name is Alenny Gastis, and I am the Journalism Department Chair and Faculty Senate President at Laney College. I also serve as the advisor to Peralta's only student-run publication, The Citizen. Some of you might not know that I am a proud Peralta graduate. I am here tonight for President Donald Moore in hopes of conveying a few thoughts to you on behalf of the District Academic Senate, the first of which is likely on all of our minds, enrollment. It is timely that this evening is also the Marketing and Communication Plan presentation. Thank you to Mark Johnson for putting that together. The plan highlights shared governance as a P C C D principle, citing that the plan will be implemented using a clear, structured, and participatory process with the goal of promoting efficient and effective participation of students, faculty, staff, and administrators in developing well-informed decisions on a timely basis. Shared governance is part of everything that we do and every decision we make at the colleges. Our colleges are unique, and our offerings are also unique. Because of this, each college has their own strategic enrollment management plan, which are not mentioned in the presentation. These plans are the brainchild of many college constituency groups, including classified professionals, and are informed by non-prescriptive statewide initiatives such as guided pathways. The idea that communication, marketing, and outreach should be a collaborative effort in the name of boosting enrollment and truly showing the community all that we have to offer at Peralta is something we have discussed in our Laney College Senate meetings. This fall, I brought up the idea of making an enrollment an official plus one in our Senate ten-plus-one purview. As many of you already know, the A S triple C has ten areas of purview in academic and professional matters, with number eleven, the plus one, defined as other academic and professional matters that are mutually agreed upon between the governing board and the academic senate. Although D A S has not yet made this an official plus one, I can't help but wonder if enrollment would be an area perfect for consultation and collaboration with our district service center. Faculty are directly in touch with student needs and also have program insight, as well as specialized information about everything from curriculum to potential career opportunities. This kind of insight is essential when it comes to district communication. As we prepare for the next stage of budget development, let's take a look at what our needs are in terms of enrollment, outreach, and marketing, and let's have our budget show that this is a priority. With the National Student Clearing House Research Center reporting that students enrolling in college after high school have decreased, we also have an opportunity to help support and interest our mature students, which make up the bulk of our population demographics. Our efforts should be fluid, and we should be informing our marketing and with data about our students. We also shouldn't be afraid to ask our students or the community what their needs are. On another topic, the District Academic Senate would also like to reaffirm our support for our Board of Trustees in advance of the Board of Governors' meeting this month. The Academic Senate supports the local autonomy of P C C D and opposes any intervention by the California Community College State Chancellor and Board of Governors that would result in the appointment of a special trustee. We urge faculty, staff, administrators, students, and all locally elected political leaders to continue to support a locally-controlled Peralta Community College district, one built on an inclusive participatory governance practice that's central to decision-making. We are also anxious to learn about both essential and non-essential labs for spring 2021. As many faculty have expressed concern during the last two board meetings, I imagine we will be hearing more from Chancellor Walter in her report this evening about the January fifth revisiting of these labs. In closing, as we get ready to begin another semester, the District Academic Senate and the faculty across the colleges would like to echo our need for consultation, collaboration, and introspection about how we serve our students. We ask our students every day to reach for the stars, even when they are up against incredible barriers. It is only fair that we continue to better ourselves and commit ourselves to continuous improvement in every area from curriculum to communication. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alenny, for that. I'm sorry, two point twelve, public communication. Trustee.
We have, we have one speaker for public communication, and that is Jennifer Shonoski, president of the Peralta Federation of Teachers. I think she's coming into the room now.
Hey, I'm so excited you all get to see me now. I'm going to have to start wearing my fancy clothes. Um. Um, so first I want to welcome our new student trustee. I hope I pronounce your name correctly. Yuri Ni, welcome to the Board of Trustees. I'm super excited to see your periodic table in the background as a chemist. I think that we will, we will bond well. I also didn't have a chance earlier to congratulate Cindy Reese and Nikki Gonzalez-Wen on your election to lead the Board of Trustees. I'm super excited to work with both of you in your new roles. I was also really happy, looking through the agenda for tonight, to see the P C C D Board Statement of Cooperation. I'm really happy to see the trustees coming together, especially with new members, to put it out there publicly how we're going to collaborate as a body and work together. And I hope that others will look through that statement of cooperation and that we can all emulate the principles that are, that are outlined there. I'm also really excited to listen to Mark talk later today, sorry, I'm so informal, to our communications director, Mr. Johnson, tell us about the various marketing campaigns that we'll be embarking on. I'm especially excited to see that website upgrades will be part of that. Our websites are so cumbersome and so hard to navigate that I think that that should be a top priority. So thank you for, for putting all of that together. Lastly, I wanted to take a minute to remember Anita Black, who we found out this week passed away. Anita was a longtime faculty member. She was an administrator who retreated to faculty at Merritt College. Anita was one of the members of my T R C, and I got to know her in the four years when I first came to Merritt. She was not a chemist. She made it known to me and all of our committee, my committee, that she didn't understand chemistry, but she was a really enthusiastic, helpful participant in my committee. And I'm really sorry that I, I didn't have the opportunity to say goodbye to her. We've lost so many members of really long-term members of our faculty this year. And so I hope that we'll all take a minute to, to remember her tonight and really cherish each other while we have the chance to do so. Happy New Year to everyone. And with that, I will, I'll disappear again.
Madam President, we have no other speakers, public speakers registered tonight.
Okay, thank you. Then let's move on to two point thirteen, Chancellor's Report.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Madam President. I think I would. Dr. Johnson, are you prepared to do your president's report, and then we'll move on to the others?
Yes, Chancellor, thank you. So just want to say good evening to the Board of Trustees, Chancellor Walter, presidents, faculty, classified professional staff, and students. This is my report for this evening. Just want to start off by saying, having spent many months identifying strengths and priorities and reflecting on best practices, gathering evidence, fashioning the narrative, we're very, very pleased and happy that Merritt College was able to reach the significant milestone of completing the I C R. Understanding the contributions and talents and time that such an undertaking requires, I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge those who'd been so integral to the process. My faculty and classified accreditation staff. My faculty in classified accreditation standard leads, thank you for your work. I want to thank the students, the ASMC leadership, recognizing them not only for their input, but for the courage and resolve that they displayed in ensuring that the Iser reflected the student point of view. I want to acknowledge Chancellor Walter, the district administration and staff, and also the Board of Trustees for your collective willingness to support Merritt and provide much-needed information and perspective. Finally, I want to thank the members of the accreditation and Iser task force because they engaged in the heavy lifting. And that's my Vice President of Instruction and ALO, Dr. Denise Richardson. She did an amazing job. Dr. Hillary Altman, Dr. Tom Rembarger, Professor Dan Lawson, Ms. Stephanie Harding, Mr. Shetty Henry, and our principal author of the report, Mr. Neem Thai. Secondly, I just want to say really quickly that we recently learned some really good news that the United States Department of Agriculture grant proposal that we submitted back in September was successful, and we've been recommended for funding. Yes, so the award hasn't been publicly announced. Maybe I just did that. Hope I didn't get anybody in trouble, but it's a $500,000 grant over the next three years. And the funds will be to support Merritt College's efforts to create apprenticeship opportunities and promote job placement in the growing sector of urban agro-ecology. So finally, I just want to close my remarks this evening in recognition and celebration of the life of Anita Black. We lost Ms. Anita this past Sunday, and to simply say that she will be missed would be an understatement. She began her career at Peralta more than 35 years ago, with her first position being that of District Staff Development Officer. As Jennifer noted, she went on to become a full-time faculty member in the Merritt Business Department before assuming various administrative roles, such as the Dean of the Division of Allied Health and Public Safety and the Vice President of Instruction. In fact, she chaired the committee that hired me as her successor. But most recently, she was the driving force behind the ascendancy of Merritt's cybersecurity program. And the success of that program has garnered thus far can be attributed, I think, directly to her industry partnerships that she forged and her tenacious advocacy on behalf of faculty and students. She also made tremendous contributions in the areas of community service and community building. Some of you may know that she was a proud and active member of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, and others of you are aware of her tireless efforts to lead and sustain PAW, which is the Peralta Association of African-American Affairs. Anita was the conscience of that organization. She was its standard bearer, and she was the kin-keeper. So at Merritt, we're planning a Celebration of Life program for Professor Black, and I'll be sure to keep everyone apprised of when that is. But I'm also sure that in the coming days and weeks, people will continue to come forward with their praise and tributes for Anita Black. We're gonna recount stories of her willingness to push for the things in which she believed, her way of letting you know that she didn't play, and how her strong and statuesque presence never obscured her big heart and bright smile. So in closing, I feel blessed, I feel, I really feel blessed to have had the opportunity, the chance to speak with her this past Thursday, three days before she passed away. So in concluding my remarks this evening, I will say to all of you what I said to her that morning, which is, Ms. Anita, you are loved and appreciated.
Thank you so much, Dr. Johnson. And we all hold Anita in our hearts and our memories, and we look forward to hearing from you about celebrations and other opportunities to honor her legacy with Peralta. Okay. Let's see, Dr. Garcia, would you like to provide a report for Berkeley City College?
Yes, thank you. Good evening. Good evening, President Napolea Bella Reese, members of the Board of Trustees, my colleagues, community members. I am thrilled that it is a new year. I hope, like many of you, we are bidding farewell to 2020 and looking for new opportunities in this new academic year, new calendar year. In addition to the board report that was provided in your packet, I just wanted to highlight a few items. Like my colleague, David, or excuse me, Dr. Johnson at Merritt College, we're also excited to share the completion, the submission of our institutional self-evaluation report. This has become a college labor of love and has been a phenomenal exercise in governance and collegiality, in acknowledging the great work that we have done, and also acknowledging the work that still is continued and yet to be done. So with the Iser completion, the team is rather large and rather deep, but I do want to take a moment to thank my Vice President of Instruction, Cooney Hay, who also served as the ALO, Dr. Charlotte Lee, who was the faculty ALO, and Dr. Pumi Silevong, senior researcher. There are many more folks that are behind those layers, but I know that the three, these three individuals spent a great deal of time ensuring that we were able to represent the highest quality of work and the best representation of who we are as a college and this district. I'm also happy to report that we had a successful visit with our team for the special report that was submitted in November. So the visiting team was with Berkeley City College along with sister colleges throughout the district in mid-December 16th and 17th. And we had, I think, a very positive outcome to that visit, affirmed for the work that had been done by the colleges in the district, and looking forward to additional follow-up in the January meeting with the ACCJC Commission meeting. Also, like some of my sister colleges, Berkeley City College was recognized as part of the CVC OEI, the Online Education Initiative Consortium in this next iteration. So we're preparing the final documentation to bring for board support at the next board meeting, but giving a little bit of information of work to come. And lastly, I just really want to take a moment and thank the spirit of just the community. It has been, it has been an adventurous start to an academic year, and to see the ways in which faculty have taken instruction fully or in a hybrid online, the way that classified professionals have taken the deep ways and the caring ways in which they support students in an online environment, the way that the administration has pulled through to support all of these efforts. I just, I wanted to share that it takes all of us to support students and their success and in the community. And I truly believe that Berkeley City College, in collaboration with the other colleges across the district and colleagues at the district office, the vice chancellors, the chancellor's cabinet team, I'm just feeling really refueled and renewed for what the work that is to come ahead. And with that, I will conclude Berkeley City College President's Report. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Garcia. Dr. Jones, I would like to call on you next, and you'll never, ever be giving your first board report again, so you want to revel in this moment.
Well, good evening, President Reese, trustees, Chancellor Walter, meeting attendees. Thank you very much. I am delighted to be making this report this evening. What I'd like to do first is to share a little bit about our our virtual 50th anniversary celebration. Can you stop sharing the report if you don't mind? My notes are behind it, and I can't see them with there. Thank you. Okay, so on December 1st, the College of Alameda had its virtual 50th anniversary gala. It was a wonderful event that celebrated and recognized outstanding work at the college and its impact on the community over the past 50 years. More than 170 students, faculty, staff, administrators, and community members participated in this momentous celebration. The gala included heartwarming student testimonials and special guest presentation by Alameda Mayor Ashcroft, Chancellor Walters, and trustee Willthall, as well as Executive Director of Alameda Alliance for Health, Scott Coffin, among many others. Most notably, the gala raised over $10,000 for student scholarship and emergency grants. I would like to sincerely thank and recognize all of those who planned, organized, and participated in and donated to the College of Alameda's 50th Anniversary Gala. We so very much appreciate your contribution to this momentous event. Next, I'd like to speak a little bit about the College of Alameda's Guided Pathways Meta Major Team, which included students, faculty, and the 2021 Guided Pathway Lead Team, engaged in very productive clustering activity that proposed a group of college disciplines in a number of meta major with identified areas of commonality. The team will continue their good work through the remainder of the academic year in support of implementing guided pathways at our college. Future team meeting dates are February 26, March 26, and April 23. These meetings will be held at noon. Next, in support of advancing diversity, equity, and inclusion, College of Alameda Amodja Community adopted the 1619 Project as a focusing point in many of its classes this academic year. Our faculty brainstormed and integrated themes from the project reading list into their courses. Class participated in porch talks or community conversations pertaining to selected themes. These conversations were directed, guided, and/or organic. These community brave spaces are places where students can share their truth and where scholars can convene diverging ideas and build community. The discussions dealt with relevant topics such as police brutality, disproportionate poverty, healthcare inequity, mass incarceration, among others. In spring, the Amodja Community will continue to offer the campus these opportunities to engage in porch talks on a continued diverse array of topics in order to facilitate discussion, learning, and examination. The community, the Amodja Community at College of Alameda is dedicated to promoting student success and learning and building a truly inclusive community in a creative, culturally-responsive, and accessible manner. The College of Alameda's Certified Nursing Assistant Program has garnered positive press coverage following the launching of the program. NBC Bay News Channel recently featured interviews about the program, interviewing Dean of Career and Workforce Development Eva Jennings, as well as Director of the Program Genevieve Dace. In addition, several publications also featured news about the new program, including Care Magazine and the Alameda Patch. The program will help meet the workforce demand in healthcare at a time when such assistance is greatly needed. Like my sister colleges, we also completed our Iser, and we hosted the visiting team for our special report. I will make a more detailed report on those items in my report on January 19th, but I would like to take the time to recognize and to thank my colleagues for their tremendous hard work in accomplishing those two significant bodies of work. Thank you very much, and I appreciate it. Thank you, Chancellor.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. And last but not least, of course, is Dr. Bestkoff, Dr. Rudy Bestkoff, President of Laney College.
Good evening and Happy New Year, Chancellor Walter, members of the board, and colleagues in education. I'd like to start off this evening, like my fellow presidents, by thanking and appreciating all of those at Laney who contributed to the successful completion of both our special report for the ACCJC, as well as our institutional self-evaluation report for the Accrediting Commission as well. Certainly want to thank Dr. Alfred Conoa for his months of service as our Acting Dean of Math and Sciences, as well as our ALO, and also our Faculty Accreditation Coordinator, Chris Widenbach, and certainly our staff assistant Karen Telligan, who really kind of kept us all in our lanes and moving with things. But more than that, to the many colleagues at Laney who contributed to what is truly a collective document. Also, like Dr. Garcia, I'm so excited to share the news that Laney College was accepted into the CVC OEI Consortium. And certainly remember the praise and, or the advocacy and the efforts of Professor Chelsea Cohen, our Distance Education Coordinator, as well as Professor Inger Stark, who were, who played no small part in those efforts. And I think that's something to certainly celebrate. My report continues this evening also with an update on food distribution at Laney, which continues on Mondays and Wednesdays in January. We are anticipating distributing a total of 1,200 meals for this month, along with 270 boxes of produce each week. Our ongoing thanks continues to the World Central Kitchen and Mr. Jose Corona for the continued support of our students. As you'll see in your report, the Art Department presented its first online virtual exhibition, which showcases work from Fall Semester 2020 by our great students. These students were enrolled in two classes, drawing and composition and 2D visual design, which worked to help students develop their skills in design, drawing, and compositional foundations. This exhibition is really a testament to the resilience of our students and our faculty and the creative expression they have shown despite having to study under these unprecedented conditions. Within the report this evening, you will find a link to the exhibit. And then finally, especially as we enter spring semester and focus on this being a time of completion and student success and getting people onstage at graduation, be it a virtual one or one in person, I've included two profiles of Laney College alumni who've done great things through our Culinary Arts Department. The first is former student and alumnus Annabelle Goodrich, who opened Cocoa Breeze Restaurant and Catering. It's on 2370 High Street in Oakland in August of this year, and like, adapting to the times, it has curbside pickup. This restaurant, run by Ms. Goodrich and her daughter, specializes in vegan desserts, high-nutrient drinks with superfoods, and those also with aptigens. Certainly, if you read your board report, you will, you will hear about the story she told and the great role that Laney College played for her as a student who was a single mother with three children under 10 and someone who was working nights, and just so appreciated the support that the faculty gave to her. Also featured in the board report this evening is the work of Laney graduate and Language Studies major Sedoni Brown, who recently launched a YouTube channel, Food Dots, which features Japanese cuisine. This channel makes use of animated characters that were popular overseas and presents cooking advice, not just in English, but in multiple languages. And this is thanks to her knowledge of traditional cuisine and presentation based on her 11 years living in Japan. And again, if you read your report this evening, you will see that she discusses the role Laney College played, specifically stating that Laney College "gave me an avenue when others would give up on people of color." "They prepared me for this moment," using her words from this great graduate from the class of 1995. The video itself has received over 16,000 views since it went live in November and is something and is something that I encourage you to see. And then finally, in closing this evening, I just want to give a shout out to COA for their celebration of the 50th Anniversary. I was fortunate enough to attend. And also would like to extend my condolences to the Merit College and the Peralta community for the passing of Professor Anita Black. During my time as Vice President of Instruction, I was fortunate that she was a fellow VPI as well. Among the many roles she played, and certainly as someone who was new to Laney and new to Peralta, I learned a great deal from her. Thank you, and this concludes my report.
Thank you, President Besskoff. Madam President, would it be the pleasure of the Board to ask any questions of the Presidents?
First, trustees, do we have any questions for the Presidents? Oh, I believe I do see a few hands. Oh, no, I'm sorry. No. Are there any comments from any of the trustees or questions?
Bye. Trustee Jenkins and Gonzalez Uen have their hands up.
Thank you. Trustee Jenkins first, and then Gonzalez Uen.
So I just wanted to say congratulations to Merit College for giving the grant. Excited about the work that they're going to be doing.
I don't know, Chancellor, at what point we'll get an enrollment update and whether it's appropriate to ask that at this time, or whether you want to wait, Chancellor.
I don't, certainly you may ask any question you would like regarding enrollment, but...
If it's timely. If it's not timely, we could wait until our next meeting.
Yeah, that would, yes, that would probably be better.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I believe we have no more questions from the trustees. So Chancellor, I'll...
Well, Madam President, Vice President Gonzalez Uen, trustees, fellow colleagues, Presidents, members of our community, and all of those who I have not named formally, welcome to 2021. I believe we're turning a corner, a very welcome corner in our history, and I'm looking forward to being a part of that as we move forward. And I do feel like it's a new year, and I hope that we can move that energy with us as we go forward. I don't have a very long report as usual. I just wanted to bring up a couple of points. One of them is to, yes, really shout on the mountaintops the extreme work that we all did in both the November Special Report and the Iser. And when I say "we," I don't mean me. I mean the Presidents, the VPIs, and, you know, district administrators to make those reports stellar. They were turned in on time. They were reviewed. Some folks were driving to Novato, dropping things off to make sure there were no glitches or anything. You know, we burned the midnight oil. We stayed up. We did all sorts of things. And we had a very successful virtual site visit with the visiting team. So really, really feel good about that. We are scheduled to go and present, really, with the commission here next week, actually, 10 days, less than 10 days, and talk about, you know, how great Peralta is, how great our colleges are, and we intend to leave a mark, a positive mark, at that meeting. So feel really good about that, and want to thank everyone who was involved in that effort. It was humongous. And as part of that, we also submitted our so-called progress report to the State Chancellor's Office. And we were instructed that that's something that we needed to do by December 31. And we did do that. And that report included all of our progress on our FICMAT implementation, talking about our audit findings and what we're doing there. You know, let the Board of Governors know the progress we've made. And so we submitted that on time, and we're very proud of it. The next Board of Governors meeting, thank you so much for mentioning that earlier. President Laney? I'm old, so it's hard for me sometimes to pull up a file in my mind. But the next Board of Governors meeting, I checked the website today. I believe it is January 19. It's the day after MLK. And I will be there because apparently at the last meeting, that was when they were going to be bringing up a conversation about Peralta. So I do support all the efforts that we have done here at Peralta, and I think we got this. So please plan to attend that if that meets your schedule. I think I also want to just briefly touch on two other matters. And one of them, of course, is our COVID-19 situation. As we've, as you've probably heard in the news, things are pretty dire in terms of the infection rate, especially in our communities. And we've had a regional stay-at-home order that was issued on December 3. And then we had a supplemental limited stay-at-home order, and then another order. And where we find ourselves right now is that we're basically at a stay-at-home order until the regional stay-at-home order has terminated in all regions of California. So we have, we have a lot of, you know, decisions to make before us. And we are in that purple tier. You've heard the news about the capacity of our ICU being, you know, around 5%. We've heard all the gory details about morgues and turning people away from hospitals, things of that nature. And we know that some of our, some of our colleagues in different districts are suffering even more than we are here. So in order for us to make some timely decisions about how we want to move forward, we've initiated a Chancellor's Task Force on Decision Making in Public Health Emergencies so that we can quickly respond to these changing conditions in this pandemic, which we are now believing is going to continue for some time. So we're hoping that the task force will be operational by middle of January, and we'll be calling on participation from governance and collective bargaining groups to meet and determine the best course of actions possible for us to remain safe and healthy and to make decisions in these quick turnaround periods and involving the Board in those decisions as we go forward. The task force will remain in effect until the pandemic is over. And I want to thank people in advance for agreeing to participate on that task force. And we will be looking at all kinds of decisions that are, excuse me, impacting us. The other thing that I would like to bring out is our safety plan. And I know that this is weighing heavily on many of our minds as far as how it's going, what do we need, what are we, what are we doing? And I want to let everyone know that we are on track to implement the safety plan. And at the same time, before I even go any further, I want to acknowledge the Alameda County Sheriff and what they've done for our district over the course of history. And to also note that this is a milestone for our district to make this transition. So we are going to be sending communications to our constituents, to the community, letting everyone know what is happening, what the plans are, what the processes are, and how we're going to implement different aspects of this plan. And so you'll begin to see communications coming out on a regular basis. As part of this process as well, we're going to be including participatory governance groups, standing committees coming to you, providing information, providing you opportunities to ask questions, and for us to really embrace this, this new era for Peralta. So I just wanted to make sure you knew that. You'll probably see a communication coming out tomorrow. We're looking to communicate with you every week. And I'm personally working with our staff and our administrators to ensure that the safety plan moves forward in a way that, in the way that the Board envisioned it back in, well, many years ago, because this is the culmination of something that's been in the works. So with that, I would like to conclude my remarks and return it to you, President Reese, and maybe answer questions if there are any.
Chancellor, trustees, are there any questions for the Chancellor at this point? Okay, I think we're good, Chancellor. We are now at 2.14. Update on the status of the search for the permanent Chancellor. And I am presenting on that, but I'm going to hand it over to Vice Chancellor McKinley.
Thank you, President Reese. I'm very happy to do that. And to the other trustees and everyone else in the meeting. So you'll know that there have now been, we now have four firms that have sent us proposals to conduct the search. All four firms have lots of experience, a great deal of experience in academia with at least some experience recruiting executives and others in community colleges and community college districts. So, and all of them are staffed with excellent search consultants. So whichever one the Board chooses, they are all very well qualified to conduct the search. Their approaches are quite similar, although not exactly the same with the normal steps that search firms go through in order to do this work. And the fees are all generally similar and within that, somewhere between $60,000 and $90,000, just so you'll know. And we have almost completed gathering the names for the Search Committee from the administrative and academic components of the district. We're still, still have a couple of names outstanding for classified employees to serve on the Search Committee. However, we will have those by the end of the week. And so that's basically where we are right now. There, the, I've talked with all of the representatives of the Search Firms today. They will all be available and attending the special meeting next week, whenever that is, and be able to make a short, short presentations with regard to their particular proposals. So I'd be happy to answer any questions if they, if there are any.
Thank you, Vice Chancellor McKinley. Are there any questions from any of the trustees? Thank you for that. Now let's move on to our informational items. We have two informational items. 3.1, which is the marketing plan with Mark Johnson, the Director of Marketing.
I need to unmute myself first. Thank you, President Reese. Can you see my screen?
We can.
Great. Okay, let me put it in presenter mode here. Let's try that again. And how about now? Hopefully the whole screen. Great. Well, thank you again, President Reese. Good evening, trustees, Chancellor Walter, colleagues, students, and community members. My name is Mark Johnson, and I'm the Head of Marketing, Communication, and Public Relations Department at the Peralta Community College District. And it's my honor to address the Board tonight to update you on our marketing and communication plan for this fiscal and academic year. At a very high level, this plan is a guide for the district marketing team and how we support the Chancellor, the district departments, and the colleges. The plan is designed to help increase student enrollment, build pride for employees and students, improve communication across the district and with the Board, create strategic brand awareness of the Peralta Community College District and its benefits, and modernize and organize Peralta's marketing, communication, and media initiatives. The version 3 document in the Board docs is a November revision of the plan first drafted in April, May 2020. It was widely distributed to administrators, faculty members, classified professionals, and collective bargaining leaders in May. And I thank everyone who provided feedback, which was incorporated in version 2 in August. And the intention is to update this and future marketing plans on at least a quarterly basis so we stay current with strategic goals and budget constraints. The Markon Plan exists to support organizational goals, and that's exactly what we're trying to do here. This is a plan, this plan supports the current strategic goals as well as the new board goals that were created in 2020. We've developed a regular pulsing core communication plan for internal student and community messaging. This plan is built around key events, including student enrollment periods, Board of Trustees' meetings, monthly updates of the Chancellor's Office, plus noteworthy events and awards, like the recent Campaign for College Opportunity Awards at BCC, Laney, and Merit, which we press released and which received some coverage, including big coverage by NBC Bay Area. The messaging is intended to generate media coverage where appropriate and demonstrate the good work happening all across the district in support of the students and the community that we serve. The illustration here shows our plan that included the President announcements at Laney College of Alameda, which received coverage, including from the Journal of Blacks in Higher Education, among other outlets. And this presentation was originally going to be given in December, and it was my welcome to Dr. Jones as President of COA. So we'll keep updating the Core Communication Plan constantly, not quarterly. And for my colleagues, if you have exciting news that you'd like us to press release, please email me. In addition to the Core Communication Plan, we've developed nine marketing project areas based on these goals that align with the district's strategic vision and the new board goals. I'm going to skip over the next few summary slides because I'll be discussing each of these nine items in more detail. So pardon me while we fast forward here. The first project area is to help prospective students in our service area get quality education by getting them started in college. In recent years, the district marketing team has not hit the budget to invest in direct enrollment initiatives. Collaborative Brain Trust recommended that the district marketing team take a greater initiative in order to drive enrollment, and we have. With COVID-19, we've been focused primarily on online channels of digital marketing, including email and advertising. For spring 2021, we have five campaigns in play now at the district level. The first is an email to prospective students who've applied but have not yet enrolled in any of our colleges, taking advantage of the automation from our new email system. Second campaign is sfgate.com advertorial. This is a paid article intended for workers that have been impacted by COVID-19 pandemic to let them know that we have the support resources they need to get back to college. The third campaign is with the Bay Area News Group, and that's featuring videos created in-house emphasizing the PROMIS program and financial aid programs. We've also been boosting social media posts, and we've been using Google AdWords. And if you'll indulge me for 30 seconds here, I'd like to play you a video produced by, in-house, by Angel Hunter from the Peralta TV team. We've seen these ads on web properties, including CNN and ESPN. And it's really nice to be logging into those sites and see our ads showing up. And let's see. So the next... So the next project area is on branding. The brand is more than just a visual image. It's the overall experience. It's how the community perceives the district. And we're doing more to ensure people see the benefit and importance of uh, the Peralta Community College District. We've hired a graphic design specialist, Mr. Marcus Creel, who started in July, and he's been instrumental in our work in this goal. We've created Peralta branding guidelines, Microsoft Word and PowerPoint templates, Zoom backgrounds, Peralta branding for the budget book, signature blocks for district staff with college branded signature blocks uh, in the pipeline. And I'll also mention Peralta Gems, our email newsletter that's been reborn as a new website at gems.peralta.edu. And again, we're always looking for good news to put on Peralta Gems. The third area is modernizing our marketing and communication uh, technologies. We're upgrading systems for email, texting, and website content management. First, I want to talk about email software. We've replaced GovDelivery, the old system for student announcements, with HubSpot, a company specializing in marketing and sales tools for small and mid-sized businesses and nonprofits. We've sent over 1.7 million emails via the new HubSpot system since August. The feedback has been very positive about our HubSpot emails. We have much richer data regarding the email sent regarding open and click rates, which help us refine our messages to maximize the value and impact for the students uh, and prospective students who receive them. On the texting front, as of November, we're live with SMS Zap, a texting service. A texting service that integrates with HubSpot. Uh, and as uh, we, we are working on our website content management system. Uh, with HubSpot, we're working on an upgrade of the Peralta website using the HubSpot content management system. Okay. The next project is sort of a functional extension of the branding goal. The idea here is to have one consistent brand look across all of our materials, whether they are in print or online or in person. The new version of the Peralta website will reflect a visual aesthetic that's more consistent with our brand guidelines. Other examples here are the budget book, the beautiful new spring 2021 semester schedule booklets. Websites are the front door for our community. Uh, and the district marketing team is here to help support the colleges with their WordPress sites, while we also explore potential new tools uh, like other content management systems. The district is redesigning the peralta.edu website with the HubSpot content management system. We're treating this sort of as a pilot, and if successful, the colleges may want to consider moving from WordPress to HubSpot. And I'll be communicating more about that upgrade as we proceed. Social media. Our social media accounts are active with Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, LinkedIn, and YouTube. And we will be exploring uh, TikTok earlier uh, in, in the new year. Our social media account audiences have grown organically. Some modestly, uh, Facebook, we saw six percent growth, while others have been significant. Our followers on Instagram have nearly doubled, and our followers on YouTube and LinkedIn have more than doubled. We won an award for social media from CC Pro for our Become a Champion tweet featuring a seventeen second video uh, promoting Lady College football. And we're making good progress on the social media front. We aim to develop innovative programming for Peralta TV and radio station. Our TV station celebrated forty years in 2020, and Peralta TV has kept broadcasting as cable access twenty-four seven throughout the pandemic. We were able to transition to uh, remote broadcasting, and I want to commend my team uh, for their efforts there. This time a year ago, I hope that we would be providing two-camera filming of Laney football and Merritt soccer and COA volleyball, uh, at least one game from each of our team sports, but the pandemic is not cooperating with us there. So I think there's a real opportunity as we uh, come back to campuses on how we can expand our television and radio programming. The next project is about evaluating the effectiveness of Markham activities with data-driven research and monitoring methods. We've made really good progress here. We now have Google Analytics on the district site. The data is already guiding decisions as we work on the redesign of peralta.edu. We have thousands of pages on the Peralta website, but most are never visited by human beings. Uh, our primary users are employees who use the district website to access tools like their email. We have a rich reporting tools um, now integrated within HubSpot, and that helps me have one single dashboard that I can look at our advertising, social media, email, and website usage. And the data really helps drive our decision-making. Another project area is on staffing. We started the fiscal year with four vacancies, and we filled two of those positions. We've hired a graphic design specialist, Mr. Marcus Creel, who I mentioned earlier. We've hired a radio program specialist uh, who started on December first. That's Dr. Felicia Bridges, and she joins the district marketing team, having previously worked as the PIO at Berkeley City College. We've put the second TV program specialist on hold during the pandemic. The goal is to have this person available for recording live sports in two-camera studio shoots, either of which is a priority right now. And we're also reconsidering the web architect. That's on hold while we evaluate the PeopleSoft nine point two upgrade. Since one of the goals of that web architect is to help students enroll in um, mobile devices. So with that, I'll conclude and say our focus is on telling good stories for students, for employees, and our community with the core communication plan. And with new tools like HubSpot, reporting tools like Google Analytics, building relationships with local Eaves Bay media outlets, all of these things are working. Our Meltwater social media sentiment monitor was positive in November and in December. Over time, we'll continue to yield positive benefits for the district, employees, and most importantly, the students we serve. Thank you very much. And with that, I'll take questions.
Thank you, Mark. I believe we have quite a few questions. Um, trustee Bonilla and then trustee Withrow.
Yes. So, Mark, first of all, I always have to look for you. You move on my screen. It's like so many people. So, um, first, let me just thank you um, for providing, um, one for your patience because you've gone back a couple of times and have made revisions to this. I want to appreciate that. Um, and thank you, um, especially for honoring and including uh, the recently adopted goals by the Board of Trustees because we know um, that that starts to set a really um, important tone for the direction of the district. So, and then congratulations on the award, um, on the media award. So that's fantastic, right? And I really, uh, towards the end, you really started to capture my attention on, because I'm always looking for, and so why are we doing all this? And what does all this mean? And, you know, like, I know it's good. The tools are great. The resources are amazing. But then I start to ask questions, and how does this help our students? Um, and you're doing it, you're capturing it, but I want to actually hear it. This is why we're doing this. This is why we've put these resources in place, right? The rebranding is important because it's, it's modern, it's, um, it's, it's been tested, it's been, you know, it works with the population of students that we're trying to attract. So I really want to, I, I really want to hear just kind of the students come through as a reason why we're adopting every single strategy that you brought forward. It gets amazing. Everything that you've pulled together is amazing, but I want to know that we're doing this because it makes sense for the students, it makes sense for our faculty, it makes sense for our administrators, it makes sense for our district, it makes sense for our colleges. And I think you're doing it. I just want to, I want to hear that, right? So I want to pull this out because I don't want to have to infer that this is why we have an amazing marketing plan that you spent amazing amounts of time with. Um, and that I really want this to resonate, that the reason why this amazing work is being done is because this is what works for our students. Um, so I just want to thank you again for um, providing such a comprehensive, I love all the analytics at the end. I love all the student demographics and all the information. I just really want to make sure that um, as we are moving forward um, and treat this as a living document. I did hear you say that this is something that's going to be updated and reevaluated, um, and that it really needs to come forward um, as something that is um, a, a functional tool or a set of tools and strategies because it's good for the students. So I just want to leave you with that, and thank you so much.
Thank you, trustee Bonilla.
Mr. Withrow?
I'd like to follow up on that. Um, good report, good report, good coverage, uh, very informative. There's a, a concern of mine about audiences, and um, do we have the, the simple, simple kind of addressing overall audiences, or do we tailor it to specific audiences? But neither here nor there. It was a good report. One of the areas I, I didn't hear, I may have missed it, but I didn't hear, is the marketing plan going to employers. The marketing plan going to employers in our immediate area here. Whether they be businesses, large businesses especially, but businesses uh, or state employees, federal employees, uh, city employees. Where we would be focusing on the uh, well, overall management of it, but the HR department, where they can see what we have to offer and what skill sets their current employees are deficient in, where they can be enhanced, where they can uh, move into a different role, a broader role, and um, a, uh, enhance the overall operation of whatever organization we're talking to. Where, where do you cover that, Mark?
Sure. Well, that's a, that's a great question, trustee Withrow. The tools that we brought on, the new HubSpot system, that is a customer relationship management system, and that gives us the opportunity to segment our audience and track our communications with those different types of audiences. And certainly, um, community partners and employers is an audience that we could integrate into HubSpot. And it, it's a fair point. We haven't started that. I mean, we, we've really been focused on students and student enrollment specifically. So we haven't kind of started investigating the other opportunities. But with our improvement of bringing on the HubSpot system, we have the ability to be more organized and targeted in the way that we communicate with industry partners. I think right now, some of that communication is done at the department level, at the different colleges, and we have that opportunity to kind of aggregate that information, put it all in the one database, uh, and um, leverage that across the four campuses.
Good. Thank you.
Madam President, if you're waiting to figure out whose hands up, mine is.
Yes. Trustee Gonzalez, you win.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Johnson, thank you so much for the report. It's really uh, generative, uh, thought-provoking. And so, you know, part of the value of a great report is that it gets you thinking, and, and your report was very useful in that way. I really appreciated your your office's attempt to rely on data. Like, actually look and see where are we doing well, and where could we do better? And, and that's just really critical. The other thing that I, I really appreciated was how you talked about trying to tell story as a way of doing marketing, and I think that's really critical. I think, you know, we could probably make quite a bit of headway on the Last Chance Hugh stuff and just be thinking, how do we tell that story across the disciplines? Because it's not just in athletics that you have incredibly dedicated faculty members and staff members who are thinking deeply and individually and powerfully about students. And, and there are a lot of really critical stories to be told there, which makes me then want to circle back to a question about data. One of the things that I, I'd love to hear more about, and it doesn't have to be tonight, it, because I don't want to drag on, but is um, where we are getting student input in this planning process. Um, I'm, I'm seeing sort of the, the, the broad analytics, but it seems to me that the direct experience of students in our system is, is critical. And it's not just critical for outreach and enrollment, but also for the equity work that we do. How do we help students be successful, starting from before they get here? And of course, they got to get here to be successful. So, you know, the, the tie-in between what marketing is doing and the overall equity work is really critical. And that's where I think tapping, figuring out, maybe you've already figured this out, and so I'm just preaching to the choir, sorry. But how do we get the input from students? And I think that that has to be done, you know, one, by looking at the formal process of student governance and, and, you know, as the representatives of students. But I also think probably like focus groups, not only of students here, but of students who aren't here yet. And then the last thing I want to say is we're a really ethnically complicated district, like region, right? And, and so we have to have, be, you know, really sophisticated in the multicultural outreach. And each, everybody who's in this room tonight is an expert in this area. But we've got people throughout the enterprise who are really focused in on this. And it seems to me that that's where marketing should be connected to the, the hands-on work that's going on on our campuses, in classrooms, with student services. That if we're not really tying into that work and those experts, the people working day-to-day with the students, then we're losing a lot of data and critical input. And you've got people working in silos, and then that shouldn't happen. And I think that one of the things the district office could always do a better job of, even when we're doing a great job, is um, making the connection to the work on the campuses. So thank you so much. The, you know, take my thoughts or leave them. That's just my thoughts. Like I said, I think the value of a, the mark of a great report is it gets you thinking. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, so we are, the students are our North Star. Everything is about the students. And there's always going to be more opportunity for us to involve students in different ways. I'm very excited about our new student trustee uh, on the board. Uh, and um, so welcome, Yuri New, uh, Yuri Ni, and uh, I hope that I can use you as a resource. But there's always going to be more opportunity for uh, connecting with students. And I am pleased to say that as far as your last point, trustee you, the student services teams at the four colleges are uh, I would call power users of our new HubSpot system. And they're, they're using it for student communication. We gave them the tools, and they have run with it, which is really exciting.
Mark, I have a question as well. I'm looking to see if there are any other hands up, but I don't see any.
Yes, there are. Sorry, trustee Polk and trustee Yuri.
Wonderful. Is that order, chancellor?
Yes.
Okay, trustee Polk and then trustee Yuri.
Yes, I had a quick question. I'm kind of piggybacking off what uh, trustee Gonzalez, you one was saying. Are you planning to do any sort of marketing to um, uh, in languages other than English?
That's a, uh, short answer is yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so I've been in conversations about advertising, um, putting messaging on, you know, Spanish-speaking uh, television, Univision, using that kind of opportunity. So we haven't, we haven't made any commitments yet, but I'm absolutely interested in investigating that path.
Great. And then the last thing I'll say real quickly, um, I, again, piggybacking off uh, trustee Gonzalez, you one. Um, I'd like to be, I, I would like to hear a little bit more about student input, not necessarily tonight, but as we move forward with this, because I, I really do feel that student input is, is very important for this, um, especially as we're engaging in social media, et cetera. So, um, not necessarily a question, just an observation for later on.
Of course.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, trustee Polk, and let's go to our student trustee.
Yeah, hi, Mr. Johnson. So I'm the newly elected student trustee. I just want to say feel free to use me as a resource. Yeah, I also want to quickly comment on that, the use of the social media. It's really great to see our school is using Facebook, Instagram, and even TikTok. Because I feel like TikTok is one of the latest popular, like, social media. And it's just great to see our school is active on TikTok. And like one example is, I know Laney College, we have one Instagram page. And especially last time I served, we post a lot of student activities through Instagram page. Yeah, it's great. So I'm looking forward to see more of our school on different social medias.
Thank you.
We have trustee Jenkins and then a comment from President Bestkov.
Trustee Jenkins.
Thanks, thanks for the world best report, Mark. Awesome. To piggyback on trustee Nees' comments about the social media, what other social medias are we planning on using that market towards our younger students? So I know TikTok is one of them, Instagram. Are we looking into the up and coming social media sites? I know Clubhouse is a popular social media outlet that's coming up. And I can't wait to see your first TikTok video.
Yes, so TikTok, TikTok is for, we, I, I welcome input on any other social media channels. You know, it's really exciting. We've, I mentioned that we've had modest growth on Twitter. Our Instagram growth has, has really, you know, we've more than doubled with Instagram. And that's visual storytelling. That's exciting to see. And we are interested in any other channels are. Really, the whole point about social media is putting the message where the students or the prospective students are. And you know, I'm, I, I'm a middle-aged man. I need help knowing where our students are. So I welcome that kind of feedback.
Thank you. President Bestkov?
Yes, thank you. Trustee Delphine Polk, just wanted to let you know, actually at Laney College, much of our outreach now has actually been in languages other than English. A couple of meetings ago before you were sworn in, we actually, we, we had four of us from Laney who appeared on Chinese television station KTSF. And unfortunately, the community got to see my face on TV. I don't know if that'll help enrollment or not, but certainly that, that happens. So just want to let you know, we are making those efforts and working in collaboration with Mr. Johnson's office. Also trustee Withrow, to your point about being kind of industry-conscious on our, on our, advertising our courses and everything. Our career education programs all have advisory boards throughout their, throughout the district. And as part of our meetings with industry, one of the things that happens is our discipline faculty and then the deans in that area will typically share our course offerings with industry. But certainly, your, your question and your point is this is a valid one.
Thank you. Do we have any more comments?
I haven't seen any more hands.
Great, then I just have a few questions. And I want to connect back to what trustee Bonilla has said. And the two things that come up for me, first of all, thank you. Mark Johnson, this is, this is great. This is a great beginning. And again, thank you for your patience and actually bringing it to the board. I know this is a long time coming. So your goal number eight, which deals with the benchmarks and your metrics. Good to know that you are using metrics now. I didn't know that you weren't using them before, but I'm glad that you're using them now. And so what's important for me is, as we move forward, creating benchmarks that are going to allow us to see the ways in which our marketing endeavors are actually making or not making changes in enrollment in enrollment outcomes, right? Because when we think about enrollment, that's what we're, we continue to say. We need to do marketing, we need to do marketing, we need to do marketing. So I think we need to fine tune our kind of analytics and our metrics there to ensure that as we do something, how is it or how is it not affecting our enrollment outcomes? I think that that's going to be important. So if you could continually update the board on that, because we'd love to see how that's happening. And the second comment actually is something that trustee Handy had brought up, and I'm just going to pick it up because it, it brought to my, it came to my mind as, as you were talking. The coordination nation that's happening between the district marketing efforts and the college marketing efforts. Can you speak to that a little bit? And you know, and there's also a part of me that wonders sometimes whether Peralta CCD, if that is seen as one and the same as the four different colleges, right? Or how do we, how do we get in front of that, if we do get in front of that?
Sure, that's a great question. Thank you, President Reese. The, um, I wanted to be clear at the very beginning of the talk to say that this is the plan for the district marketing department. And because the plan is not intended to be a comprehensive plan for the entire district. To to the point that Elani Gassist made earlier, there, there is active enrollment management activities that are going on at the colleges. So how do, how does my team connect with the colleges? I lead a monthly meeting with the PIOs from the four campuses. There are full-time PIOs at a couple of the colleges and, and contractors and PIO types at the other colleges. And so we get together on a monthly basis, share updates. They show me what their advertising plans are. I share what the district advertising plans are. We try and make sure that they're coordinated. We also talk about our messaging around COVID-19 and, and those sort of things. Basically, we want to make sure that our messaging is aligned across the district and the campuses. Specifically on enrollment management, Vice Chancellor Brown has started inviting me to the enrollment management meetings that she has with the college administrators. And so that's, that's been very productive so far. Meetings with the vice presidents of instruction and the vice presidents of student services. So we're connecting that way as well. Does that help?
Yeah, yeah, that does. And then again, to the metrics. If, and this is not to be answered now, but just ensuring that we use metrics in that kind of fine-tuned way and that you come back to us with updates, because we always think of marketing as a secret sauce, right? And we would love to see the ways in which our specific efforts are actually making a difference. Or if they're not, how we can make it make a difference, right? Because I think those would be good to know.
Can I, can I make a comment on that point? And I think it will be important for, for us all to keep in mind what type of marketing communication we're talking about. Because as you know, there are different kinds, different types. So if our goal is to help people remember Peralta or one of our colleges, that's a different strategy or different point than saying, you know what? We want to use our, our marketing to drive, to increase a market segment of individuals who are taking, for example, workforce or who are doing in the area of dual enrollment or something. So I think when we're getting down to that target marketing, that's, that's what we have to focus on in terms of metrics. But top of mind and making sure that people are aware of how wonderful, you know, Peralta is. You know, that's, that's a whole different ballgame. So just want to make sure that everybody's, you know, mindful of that.
Yeah, you know, and to that point, not to belabor this, but to that point, I think it'd be, it'd be really good and interesting at some point in time to see the ways in which our overall marketing, whether it's the colleges and district, how they're supporting each other in those particular goals, right? The, the many different layered goals, because then we can kind of know how the marketing is doing in these X number of goals. You know, that'd be good to see at some point. Right? I think that we do not have any more questions. All right, let us move on to 3.2. So 3.2 is the review draft of the proposed board policy regarding the board communication protocol. And this particular policy, Leisha, thank you for doing that. You're always so un-cute, thank you. This is the third document developed at a retreat that I spoke about earlier that we, and I cannot emphasize this enough, that we, the board members assiduously deliberated on, over, above, around in breakout sessions and in the larger group with incredible, great passion. And we would like to actually initiate the participatory governance process. In conversation with legal, we couldn't find another board policy that was first generated by the board. So this might be the first one, possibly. And we have the draft here, I think we're calling it a draft that will hopefully go through, that will go through the participatory governance process. And hopefully at the end, make its way through an approval and have the numbers attached to the board policy and become one of our very important board policies regarding a communication protocol. And that's it on that. If anybody has questions or comments, otherwise, let's move on to the consent calendar. Moving right along.
Make a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Yes, please, a motion by trustee Bonilla and a second.
Second.
Excellent. Madam Clark?
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Handy? Yes. Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you win?
Yes.
Trustee Reese?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Great. And if there are no comments, let's move on to the action items. And the action items, 8.1 is a standing board committee appointments. And if you could post that as well, Leisha, that would be great.
Right.
Thank you.
Do you want a motion to approve?
Yes, a motion to approve, please. Thank you, trustee Bonilla.
So moved?
Second.
And moved by trustee Bonilla, seconded by trustee Withrow. And let me maybe give you a preparatory summary of these standing committees. These committees are in response to the requests of several board members that have been put forth for several years. I mean, the two years that I've been on the board, to create board standing subcommittees. And as a result, we've initiated three. And the three that you see up here, this first one is finance and budget, which will be chaired by trustee Delphine Polk. And trustees Withrow and myself will be part of that composition. The second committee will be student success and accreditation. And we hope to see it chaired by trustee Jenkins, but he's still deciding at this point. And then we have trustee Gonzalez UN and myself on this particular task force. And then, or I'm sorry, committee. And then our third standing committee will be the community relations committee. And that's going to be chaired by trustee Bonilla and joined by trustee Handy and trustee Delphine Polk, which is no longer pending. That's an absolute. And what I just wanted to put forth was that the, the subcommittees in our mind will be allowing us to really dig in, delve more deeply into critical areas of the district. And specifically in a matter that we just aren't able to do at a board meeting. The charge and short-term goals, as you see here, listed under each committee are preliminary, have been preliminary drafted by both myself and the chancellor. But the overall, overall goal of the committees is to support and enact the newly developed board goals and the district goals. They will be staffed by appropriate administration, as well as faculty and or staff representative dependent on the issues or specific scope of the committee. And the work in these committees will be communicated to the board through the chair and the appropriate administrator. And we just wanted to put this forward and, and vote on it. Any questions, discussion on this?
Thank you.
And one of the things that trustee Bonilla did actually bring up, and I want to make sure that we, we do pay attention to that, is for the finance and budget. As I think about the calendar that we, that we just approved in the consent calendar, chancellor, we, we probably want to also, and you've probably thought about this before already, but we just want to make sure that our finance and budget committee is in line with a specific important deadlines or important dates that are on the budget calendar. Okay, and if there are no questions or clarifications, let us vote.
Okay, trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you win?
Yes.
And trustee Reese?
I may have made a chair error. There's one more ad hoc committee that's at the end of this list. Shall I do that separately or do we want to just add that and I can, we can vote again? It's the permanent chancellor search committee?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we need an ad, a vote on the ad hoc.
Okay.
Vote on the regular committees for sure. I, I could be wrong, but I don't think we've ever put it to a vote.
Okay, okay. Well, this is a membership for the permanent chancellor, chancellor search. It is myself, Gonzalez UN and Withrow, just so people, people know. Okay, then yes, on my vote for the other committees.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you for that. Now let's go to 8.2, consider approval of classified personnel items. Acting Vice Chancellor McKinley?
Motion to approve?
Excellent, roll call.
I'm sorry, who's seconded it?
Trustee Withrow?
Okay, thank you. Okay, trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you win?
Yes.
And trustee Reese?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you. 8.3, consider approval of an academic faculty personnel item, which is a retirement. Again, the presenter is acting Vice Chancellor McKinley. Motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, trustee Bonilla and trustee Withrow, discussion? All right, roll call.
Okay, trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you win?
Yes.
And trustee Reese?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you. 8.4, consider approval of two new positions for College of Alameda. And the presenter is Vice Chancellor McKinley. Motion?
Move approval.
Second?
Second.
Okay, first by trustee Withrow, second by Gonzalez UN, discussion? Shall we vote?
I have a question, quick question, hopefully.
Yes.
So on the principal financial analyst for the College of Alameda, does this position exist at the other three colleges?
Chancellor, would you like to respond to that or?
No, it does not. Oh, okay. And so I'm, I'm just looking for the rationale about, I mean, I want to support this. I'm just trying to figure out, because I believe that the web content developer exists at some of the other colleges, not all four campuses, if I'm, because I have the same question for both. So I'm just looking for the rationale on what, what we're adopting and why and what the intended goals and outcomes are for both of these positions.
Okay, well, I think that
I am supporting, I am supporting this. I just want to better understand.
Dr. McKinley, do you have any, anything you want to add here before I go forward?
No, I don't, so.
Okay, my understanding is that the, and then of course, Dr. Jones.
Okay. My understanding is that the, and then of course, Dr. Jones, if you want to provide any other supporting information, that would be fine. My understanding is that, yes, we do have web content developers at other, other campuses. But when we were in the transition, we were not able to move forward quite yet with the web content developer for College of Alameda. And as I mentioned somewhere else, each of the campuses has a different need or a different set of circumstances around their web development. And so that's the reason why we want to employ an individual to be responsible for that. For the principal financial analyst, this is a position that we, we are hoping will support College of Alameda's ability to understand its finances and to support the budget director that is there, the position that is there right now. As the board may know, or individuals in this room may be aware, oftentimes the colleges lack the support they need in order to transact the accounting and analyze their finances at the level that they need to. So that's the rationale for this, for these two positions. And I would be happy to hear from Dr. Jones if he has anything supplemental to add.
No, the only other thing that I would say is, we really do need to focus on fiscal analysis. And so this role will allow us to provide managers with more robust analysis to make better fiscal decisions.
Okay. So are we anticipating that this is a strategy that we're going to use for all colleges? Or this is some sort of assessment that was done just at one college? It was done at the others, but deemed not necessary? Or I'm, I'm just trying to understand.
Well, as you might remember, there are, there's, well, that's, I don't think I want to go there. So I'm not, I'm not certain that we are going to move forward with putting this on each campus, but I do, I've just been informed that Laney College does have a.
Well, you're, you're muted.
Thank you. That's good, because I said a lot of really good things. It looks as if, I have to stand corrected, that actually Laney College does have a principal financial analyst. I believe Merritt College does. Okay, thank you for that correction. So really what we're trying to do is make College of Alameda whole, from what I see. And we also may want to think about having a principal financial analyst for the district office, the district finance office as well. So it is not really, the idea is to bring Alameda up to the level of the other colleges.
Okay. Chancellor, thank you so much. So because I wanted to understand if we were creating a brand new position, but this position actually exists
Correct.
at other colleges.
Right.
So we're not creating a brand new position, but we are expanding this position to College of Alameda, and it's now being, it, it will be filled.
Correct.
If I understand correctly. And then for the web content developer, let me just say I 100% support that because I know that that work had been contracted out. And the board had had many, many, many conversations every time an ICC popped up on web content development. So I personally am happy to see and support that description, that position. But I just want to make sure that these are not brand new positions. But, but they are existing positions that are being extended to each one of these colleges. Or in this case, the College of Alameda. Thank you for clarifying.
Trustee Handy?
Actually, I did not get the impression that your assumption was correct, trustee Bonilla. The, you're saying that the, the fiscal piece is, is a position that is not, is not, because it says here that you're creating two new positions. And so you're saying that the one position is one that other colleges have and that COA needed, so that will make, make them whole. But the second position on the web designer, I'm not hearing that this is something that's happening at all colleges. And just to give a bit of history, we have a district department that is supposed to cover many of these acts. In the past, colleges were not getting the support that they were, that they needed. So then we had to step outside when enrollment was crashing and allow, actually to allocate funds for them to get all of these things done. They're public information now, but that was to be a one time thing, not an ongoing thing. So when you say a web developer, now you're talking about an, an everyday position. Whereas opposed, once the web is developed, it's done. That's not a day to day piece. And we have some redundancy here. And as I was talking to the board president earlier, we need to relook, we need to look at this and make a determination where we want to go with this. Because we have, we have, again, at the district office, the public information office, but it continued to be defunded. And at one point, Laney College and Berkeley City College was giving more money for their outreach and enrollment plan than our district program had. Because the funding had been cut so sharply. So I think right now, because we have so many new people, I mean, from the chancellor to the board secretary that, that don't know the history, that we really need to look at what, what we, what our expectations are of the districts, the, the, the public information from the district office, what the expectations are for that extending out to the colleges, and whether we're going to reverse our earlier decisions and now put it back primarily at the colleges. So I was greatly concerned when I saw that position jump up too. Because the web developer is, that's a position that would make more sense to me if it was supporting for colleges. But once it's developed, it's done. So then we continue to pay salary. It's not on a contractual basis. It's not on a consulting basis as an actual position. So those are the questions, very similar to trustee Bonilla's. And I think some of it, we may have to look at agendizing and having a discussion about where the district wants to go in that direction. Either way, I, what I just don't want to see is redundancy. So hopefully that we can just kind of figure it out. But I applaud you for trying to, Dr. Jones, for trying to bring College of Alameda up to par in getting the services needed. But in, at the same time, we do have these concerns, and we need some clarification of where we're going with this.
Thank you.
Yeah, so thank you for that, trustee Handy. And let me just say that we do have the positions at other colleges, the web content developers. I'm sorry, I have to make sure I have this. Yeah, that's correct. And it is decentralized. And the thing is, is that a website, a website content is an ongoing matter. It isn't, it isn't, you know, it's done and then we're finished. There's always new technology, there's new information, there's required information to have on the college campus websites, which are very different from, you know, what we do in the district. But there is, you know, to your point, there is integration between, and communication between the district and the colleges in terms of, you know, the, the branding and the way and what's, what's, you know, placed on a website. But just for example, colleges are required to have, you know, information for parents and other users about their, their college. And, you know, certain types of reporting and information that we need to, to, to make sure it's public. So, but now having said that, you know, we're happy to come back or to provide some updated information to the board in letting, letting everyone know and give feedback to us about, you know, desires and directions that you'd like us to follow.
Excuse me, President Reese. What I, what I'm asking is that because we're making all of these changes and we still, we're still holding on to all, some old practices. What I'm saying is we need to look at how it's integrated, so there aren't any overlaps. I understand what you're all saying, what you're, what you're all asking for. I don't have a problem with that. What I'm saying is, I think it's time for us to look at and, and have some strict outlines of what is expected from the district team and what's, and what is expected at the colleges? And where do they meet so they can support each other? So that we have continuity of messaging and looks and content on all of our colleges, as well as the district office. So I just think it's time for us to kind of do like a desk audit and look at all of, all of these things and see where we want to go. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Handy. And, and I think that Chancellor Walter will get, will get back to us about that and you as well. And it coordinates very well with the presentation that Mark Johnson just had had and some of the questions about that integration. So I think that both the points that you raised and the points that trustee Bonilla raised are right on target. So thank you, the three of you for, for raising that. Okay, let's.
Looks like, it looks like trustee Gonzalez, I'm sorry, Vice President Gonzalez U N has his hand up?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. And Linda, thank you for asking that question, because it, it brought to mind the basic question of how we're arriving at decisions and resource allocation. And, you know, like, I, I don't know enough about the content of a lot of the decisions that are being made that we're approving. So it's like, my basic instinct is, well, I have to trust that you all are making the right call. To the extent that I am confident that the process that you arrived at in deciding this is where we're going to invest our college dollars. We've got X number of positions, these are a priority. To the extent that I'm confident that that decision is being made with really significant and meaningful input by students, by classified workers, by faculty members, as well as by administrators, then for me as trustee, it allows me to, to view the decision or the recommendation with a lot more confidence. When we get that input, I think everybody understands that we get better data. We make better decisions. And so it's not just, you know, an arbitrary political statement to say we need shared governance, we need deep input. It, it's actually a really important function of how we make decisions in a way that, that is efficient. So I'm going to trust that in this instance, of course, you have a lot of deep input from faculty and staff and students in terms of the allocation of, of positions. That there's some process where people look and say, yeah, we have X number of FTEs. That's the resource area that we should go at. Recommendation then goes to the president, the president makes a call. So I'm just going to assume that. And if I'm mistaken, please disabuse me of my confidence. Thank you.
Thank you. Let us move on now to, have we voted on that?
No.
Oh. Roll call, Madam Board Clerk.
Yeah. Okay, trustee Withrow? Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you in?
Yes.
Trustee Reese?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Thank you. Eight point five, consider approval of the proposed PCCD holiday schedule for the 2122. Wow, fiscal year.
So moved.
Second.
Excellent. Discussion? Good. Roll call, please.
Okay, trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you in?
Yes.
Trustee Reese?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries?
Thank you. And now we are at nine point one, Board of Trustees Reports. Would you, where shall we start here? Let me, I, I don't know where to start because of all of those boxes. Trustee Bonilla?
Well, sure. Thank you for that.
You're always on my mind.
So I want to wish everyone a happy, or I should say a safe 2021. It's been a, it's been a challenging year, and I know it's going to, there's going to be more challenges ahead of us. But I do want to talk about just the things that I am grateful for. So I am grateful that our community has the resilience to get up every day and do the hard work. It's a struggle out there, and you all, especially college presidents and your teams, are making a difference in our community. Food insecurity is huge right now, and you all have really just played a critical role in ensuring, in doing your part, small but significant, making sure that students and families in our community have nutrition, and that's, that's so important. I also want to, I just want to be thankful. I want to be thankful. I want to be thankful for our health. I want to be thankful for the work that we all do. And I'm just looking forward to a, an amazing, positive 2021 with all of you and our students. Thank you.
Trustee Handy?
Hi. First of all, I am actually so happy as well to see all of you here. It's 2021. We've made it. It's been a very, very difficult time. We have many community members who are dealing with COVID. We have many losses that we're dealing with even. We have many of our employees in prayer who are also struggling. And as the Peralta family, I just hope we all just kind of keep them in prayer and supporting them in any way that we can. I enjoy working every Tuesday and Thursday at O'Kerr, doing the Merritt, Merritt College food giveaway. It's, you know, again, it's the Steph Curry Foundation, World Kitchen and Merritt College. And we still have that steady stream of employee, of, of trustee, I'm sorry, steady stream of volunteers. And we have the same loyal faculty members who have been there since I started in May. And, and we've even had some trustees coming out and doing it and being the runners and stuff. Today, we had to tell some of the agencies that we're cutting back. Because as you know, we thought this would be over a long time ago. And so the funding may or may not be running out. So last week, we started letting some of the senior homes and the Police Athletic League and some of the other organizations that we pack up a substantial amount of meals for, know that we were going to have to cut them back. And if you're cutting back on meals that you're sending over to the Police Athletic League, that's really, those are children that are in programs that are being fed. And the, the stress that we saw on the people's faces as they came to pick up the, the pre-packed meals is the same stress that we felt. For me, it was a challenge as people came up to us, our regulars that we see every week, to say to people, you know, normally if it's a family of three, I would want to give them six meals. Today I had to think about it because we're being cut back to less than 500 meals or less, where we were doing close to 1,000 last week. So it's really a challenge, but I'm hoping that, that we somehow that we're more. that we somehow that we're, more COVID funds will come and be able to support these food pantries because it's really a challenge. People really need that help. And even Ocur, who is the executive director, Shamari Carter is actually a graduate from Peralta Colleges. And they had a coat drive, brand new coats a week and a half ago, and they went quickly. What broke my heart is the next day when people came in for the food drive, they were saying, oh, do you have any more coats? And we would say no. And they said, well, who else is giving out coats? And one woman literally ran out of the food line to jump on the bus to go all the way to McLeimans to see if she could get a coat for her children. So I'm really grateful that we have this opportunity, all of our colleges, to supply the food. And what people may are guessing, it's us who, who are blessed by being able to be there and serve the public in that way. And if anyone just feels that need to get off their block or get out of their house and come to any of those centers to volunteer on those days, I guarantee you, you will be the one who wins from that because it just kind of just really lifts your heart to be able to be out there with the community in this really challenging, scary time. So that's, that's my contribution. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Handy. Trustee Withrow?
Just briefly, I have an inside source that tells me that the enrollment at CSU East Bay is down 25% to 5%, which is huge. Beyond that, you know, may everyone have a, a happy, healthy, productive and prosperous 2021. Something many, many steps beyond what we've experienced over the last year. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Withrow. Let's go to some of our newer trustees. And of course, our student trustee too as well. Trustee Jenkins?
Thank you. Happy New Year, everyone. 2020 was a challenging year for for everyone, for my family in particular. I'm glad that we're in a new year and there's new hope associated with it. I want to thank all the employees that keep the district going. It's only because of you that we are thriving and surviving as a district. I want to echo what trustee Handy said about the food giveaways. Been a number of times. And it's not just a food giveaway. It's empowering the community through the food giveaways. You get all different types of people, diverse people coming there to get food, resources. So that's something that if we can, we should keep it going. And I just want to appreciate all my fellow board members for an awesome retreat. It was productive and it gave me a good chance to get to know my fellow board members. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Jenkins. Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes, I'm echoing my colleagues. Happy New Year to everybody. As one of two new trustees, I'm really excited to start this year, 2021, rolling up my sleeves and getting to work. I do want to send a special shout out, like my colleague trustee Jenkins said, to the staff who are keeping our Peralta community going and as well as the faculty who's working with our students and making sure that we're continuing the education that our students desperately need. I want to thank everybody here and everybody in the Peralta family for welcoming me with such open arms. I'm really excited to move on and get into, and yeah, just get into the work in 2021. So thank you very much.
Thank you, trustee Delphine Polk. Trustee Yuru Ni?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you so much for every trustee who welcomed me to the board. I feel warmly welcomed. And I just want to say, also during this difficult time, I hope I can do every I can to represent and support my fellow students and to achieve our goals in education. And yeah.
Thank you. And trustee Gonzalez-U N?
Thank you. And I'll echo the Happy New Year sentiments. Let us make this one better. Hopefully Godzilla does not come walking out of the bay. My own classes started this week and I'm just reminded, I am 150 new students and 20 interns and I am just reminded of how fortunate our lives are and how much struggle other people have sometimes. And so I, trustee Handy, I really appreciated your, your your thoughts about the work that you're doing and that other people in the community are doing around poverty and how integrally tied in it is to our work. I'm really excited and hopeful that, that this board and this district can do this work and really focus on that and not other things that have, and sometimes in the past really been a distraction. And I pledge to do my very best to be part of that forward progress, forward process. I want to thank in particular the faculty and staff and administrators who work, you know, over this break period. And in particular, those of you who are new to your positions. Ms. Jameson, you've just done an extraordinary job staffing the board with very little transition. And, you know, we, we love Brenda. She'll be impossible to replace, of course, ever. You've just been fabulous. And Chancellor Walter, again, you've stepped into a role quite unexpectedly. And I think we're really very grateful to you for that. So I'm, I'm I'm just going to stop talking now and pass the baton back to President Reese.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for that. 2021 is going to be difficult. It's going to continue to be difficult, I think, for quite a bit. But it also has the opportunity to be really pivotal, right? I, I'm just thinking about where, how far this district and all of you college presidents and all of your staff and all of your administrators, how far, and, and the chancellor, how far and how much has happened in such a short period of time? Where we are today compared to where we were just a few months ago, it was bleak. And, and we are in a good place. And what the board has done, also pivotal. And, and that is amazing. So it, it's, 2021 will be very challenging still, but I do believe that there is much that's going to happen in this particular district. Those ACCJC reports, I can't say it enough. The draft was, was, showed so much of what you all did. So thank you, thank you, thank you. Because they were really quite, they, they showed great promise. They showed stability and leadership. They showed all the things that each of you have done with everyone in your respective colleges and the district to move us forward. So thank you for that. Life is short. Life is incredibly fragile. I think that we don't take the time to appreciate all of you enough. We don't overtly appreciate you. And I don't think that we generally take the time to appreciate everybody around us enough. So just thank you, thank you, thank you. And if we ever forget to say thank you, do know that in our heart and in our mind, we appreciate every single thing you do. And I believe that at this particular point, we, we go to announcements, but I would like Dr. Brown to actually close the meeting after announcements in memory of Professor Anita Black. Okay, but let's go to announcements first with Vice President Gonzalez-U N.
Thank you. Just a few announcements. And just before I make the announcement, I want to, on behalf of the board and the district, extend our deepest sympathies to former trustee Guian, whose father passed away over the holiday break. And that's a real tragedy, a life cut short really unnecessarily. And our, our, our love and thoughts are with you, Abell.
And Nikki, we also want to keep Abell in our thoughts and prayers as he is getting well because he is not well himself.
Thank you for sharing that. Upcoming district holidays. On Monday, January 18th, in honor of Dr. King, the district is taking a holiday to celebrate and will be closed. We have a special board meeting next week on January 12th, Tuesday at 5:00 PM, from 5:00 to hopefully no later than 7:00. And the focus of that board meeting is this chancellor search. And I'll just remind members of our community that enrollment right now is open for spring 2021, the spring 2021 semester. And classes start on January 25th. And it's like a really great time to go back and get more education and continue with your education. So go at it. It'll be fun. Sign up for classes. Okay, that's all the announcements.
And Dr. Brown, I will turn this over to you so you can close the meeting.
Thank you, President Reese, and the Board of Trustees and Chancellor, community and colleagues. This has been a very difficult few days for many of us who know Professor Anita Black. There are rare educators like her. As a matter of fact, I've been saying, they don't really make them like her anymore. Anita Black served us so well, so strongly, so, with so much commitment, so much advocacy. And it's, it's really an honor to be in a district where we have so many amazing teachers. It's really the one thing that struck me first and foremost when I came to Peralta. So many dedicated faculty that go above and beyond. But there are very few faculty who, who literally transform institutions. And Anita is one of those faculty that has transformed the institutions within our district. And she will be missed in the person and in the flesh. But her great work in teaching thousands of students, in leaving programs where students are accelerating and getting really, you know, phenomenal positions and employment in means that she will really never be forgotten. A great educator leaves their mark on so many people that even if they're not here in the flesh, they are still here and they are present with the works that they have given. Our hearts, our prayers go out to her mother, who's 91, 92 years old, to her sister, to the rest of her family and friends. And I really hope that we all look to educators like Anita as models for how to leave a positive, permanent impact on the planet. And so thank you for allowing the time. And, and thank you to Anita Black for giving us so much.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. With that, the meeting is adjourned. Have a wonderful night, everyone. Thank you. And by the way, I just want to note, it's 9:21. That's a very good thing. Bye-bye.
Is that wood? We're not going to, thank you. Good night, everyone.
Good night.